This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call the meeting of March 7th, 2022 to order. Can you call the order?
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noah?
Here.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Here.
And Mayor Wallagora is excused.
Please rise for the.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Approval of the minute.
The changes.
Agenda, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. You do it this time.
Is it Carolyn?
Yes, she did. She did. I pointed at her.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
Are there any modifications to the agenda? Approval of the minutes? Issue?
I move to approve the minutes.
We don't have to do that.
Well, okay then, I was just gonna make my first mention.
Well, you did, you were the first one.
Okay, I rescind the motion. The move that we put minutes.
Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items have a maximum of five minutes to address their concerns. This is the only time during council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Anyone?
We have one virtually.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening to the Alpena City Council and to whomever else has joined us at this meeting today. My name is Jamie Bobian and I am currently a freshman attending the University of Michigan, where I am majoring in political science on the pre-law track in future hopes of becoming a criminal or corporate lawyer. I have lived at 240 Bedford Street my entire life and this address is unfortunately within 300 feet of the impending recreational marijuana shop. 240 Bedford Street is what I've always been proud to call home. I was lucky enough to have been raised in a neighborhood that maintains a safe, community-friendly environment, which it has continued to uphold to this very day. I am able to walk outside on the sidewalks fearlessly while breathing clean, uncontaminated air. The news of another dangerous substance shop being located near my childhood home is not only frustrating, but overwhelmingly disappointing. I have always thought of Alpena to be a city that values its children and the overall well-being of its citizens, but these future plans do not reflect that. If you search Alpena, Michigan online, what will pop up is a town filled with beautiful attractions surrounded by freshwater lakes. Why do we wish to ruin this reputation for the sake of drugs? Why would we want our citizens and children to feel uncomfortable in their own neighborhoods? Leaving the safety of Alpena, Michigan was truly the hardest part about moving away for college. It is why living in Ann Arbor has been one of the most life-changing adjustments I have ever had to make. Ann Arbor is known as a thriving college town filled with diversity and opportunity. However, truthfully, the community is inherently unsafe. This is due to Ann Arbor being the city with the most pot shops in Michigan with a total of 24, many residing extremely close to campus. The amount of marijuana that I come into contact with just purely walking through populated areas on campus is immensely disturbing. I often have congestion because of all the smoke being constantly released into the open air, even when I am not directly near a marijuana smoker. Many of the homeless will take their marijuana to places such as Main Street and the populated downtown areas where students are actively walking and studying. They will smoke their marijuana publicly while harassing individuals walking by. I have myself been in contact with these citizens who have attempted to grab and touch me while they were evidently high. I have even been offered edibles by an older man directly in front of a school building. Now, where am I going with this? These individuals are not permitted to bring their marijuana in a public area full of students and young children. However, they do so anyway with no repercussions or anyone to stop them. Now, this entirely disproves the overused argument of there are laws in place to keep these individuals from smoking in or near your neighborhood or house, because this has proven to not be upheld in the majority of instances if you look at many other cities. I firmly believe that it is unrealistic to place a marijuana shop within 300 feet of a neighborhood and believe that the safety of that neighborhood will not come into question. Many individuals believe that adding one or two pot shops within our city is not going to have a huge impact. This is completely and utterly false. It is apparent that this is just the beginning. The domino effect begins with one simple push, which is implementing the two marijuana shops. People begin to notice all the money it's bringing in, then a couple of years later, we gain two more. Ten years down the line, Alpena, Michigan has a total of 15 shops. As soon as we know it, we will have evolved, just as Ann Arbor has, with unsafe communities and unclean air. We must also consider the connection between the increase of drugs and the increase of crime rates within cities. Most drug addicts who are in desperation for money will resort to theft in neighborhoods. We have seen it happen. This could be breaking into cars, houses, or even robbing an innocent person on the street. This is the reality in most cities corrupted by marijuana and I am certain that it will begin to happen there in Alpena, Michigan as well. To think that this will be the future of Alpena, Michigan is unnerving to say the least. Is this really the future we wish for our next generation to live in? I do not want my little sister to grow up in a place where drugs are consistently present and available. I do not want her to be offered drugs while she was walking to a bus or school. I do not want her to be bothered every time she leaves the house by the smell of marijuana being smoked outside. I do not want my little sister to have to live in similarity to those children in the unsafe areas of Detroit where pot shops are located in almost every neighborhood. The children in my neighborhood should not be exposed to those substances at such a young and adolescent age. And with a marijuana shop in our neighborhood, it will be practically impossible to keep these children safe from these substances. The majority of cities in the U.S. are over.
Jamie, you have additional 30 seconds, please.
Are overridden with drug and crime issues. Consequently, U.S. societies are rapidly. Let us not make Alpena part of that problem. Let us not encourage this toxic trend. We have the ability to stand up and be a city that differentiates from the rest. Furthermore, we should do all that we can to fight for a safe and morally just community. Let us act as role models for our children and promote health, safety, and community within our beloved small town. I strongly encourage you to reconsider your decision on legalizing marijuana within Alpena County. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close. Citizens. Public hearing, we have non-consent agenda. A bills to be allowed in the amount of $372,447.27. The approval of the 2021 industrial facility tax monitoring report. C mayoral appointment of quick leak to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term expiring March 1st, 2026. D authorization for Mayor Wallagora and Clerk Soick to sign the discharge of the deferment payment mortgage between Thunder Bay Holding LLC and the City of Alpena.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes. We have no presentations, no announcements, no proclamations. Report of officers. Second reading of ordinance 22-471, which amends the City of Alpena zoning map. Bill?
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless any of the members specifically want it read. This is the ordinance that would amend 327 North Addison Street to be rezoned from R2 to RT. And also, there'd be a statement of conditions that are recorded with that and they were listed at the previous reading.
No questions to me.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22-471 to amend the City of Alpena zoning map.
Second.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Now, we're moving on to new business, the water production plant exterior door replacement proposal. Steve?
Good evening. On March 1st, 2022, the city received an open proposals for the replacement of five exterior doors within the water production plant. These doors and operating hardware are the original to the plant construction and have begun to fail to the point where they must be forced open and forced closed. The bid documents were sent to 12 firms and plan rooms and posted on the city's website with two bids received listed below. Meridian Contracting at $22,961 and Dever Industrial at $29,261 with $4,211 additional for the screen doors. Meridian has completed a site visit to the facility and has a thorough understanding of the project. They have completed many other projects in the past at the plant successfully. The proposals came in higher than the anticipated $15,000 for the project. This can certainly be attributed to the increase in material and labor costs we currently see in the construction supply chain. Though more than anticipated estimate sufficient funding for the work outlined above is available by combining the remaining funds from line items for safety hazard abatement and structural mechanical upgrades in the capital outlay line item for the water production plant. It is my recommendation to city engineer the water production plant exterior door replacement project be awarded to Meridian Contracting Services in the amount of $22,961.
Questions?
I do. If, if we didn't budget enough for it, where will the additional funds come from?
Where this comes from is there's a, it's a capital outlay line item that actually has quite a few projects in it and we have estimates related to each one of those projects and some of those projects earlier this year came in less than what we had originally thought and so there's some money left over in there. If we had to move money, we would certainly talk about that, but we don't really have to because it's in that capital, capital outlay line item for the building improvements as a whole.
Like a general fund?
Yeah, kind of for that, for the building itself, yeah.
Thank you.
I think one of the things, Steve, that we talked about in the past is that what we're seeing is a lot of these contractors, not only are, you know, the costs are going up, but the amount of work that they have, you know, so we're getting less people to bid and, you know, contractors actually out there have availability to get the projects done when we're, we're looking to have them complete, I'm assuming that's all what's happening here.
That's what's happening here and, you know, we, we see it even in our existing contracts that we have right now. We're seeing where work is delayed, even though they have a contract with us already. It's just, it's delayed because they're, they just don't have the people to complete the, complete the jobs.
Yeah. So, I don't like being over budgeted, certainly understandable with what we've got going on.
Right, and I guess that's the important thing to mention again is, is just that it's not, not necessarily over budget. We would certainly, you know, reconsider if it was, if it sent us over where we had to borrow money out of general fund or bring money forward from somewhere, but this is all that, kind of that whole encapsulated area of, of just building maintenance that we're taking care of and some projects come in less, some projects come in more, and so it just, it kind of balances out.
I was just really shocked when I saw that the Mount Pleasant Company, $127,075 versus, but the Thunder Bay Electric had offered and I, I thought, could, could that be a typo or is?
Oh, that's the next.
That's the next project.
Next project.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have no questions.
I have no questions.
No more questions.
I move we award the project for replacement exterior doors at the water production plant to Meridian Contracting in the amount of $22,961.
Second.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Next is 2022 High Efficiency Lighting.
This one's a fairly long memo, I won't read it word for word, but I'll kind of hit the highlights as we go through it. But we've got basically three different projects here. So, on like February 8th, 2022, the city received an open proposals for the installation and replacement of lighting throughout the city. The proposed project locations would upgrade 21 old brown pedestrian lights in the Alpena Marina break wall to the high efficiency dark skies compliant bollards, replace six existing old brown poles in the Johnson Street Boulevard and with, with a new city standard light pole that's high efficiency dark size compliant, and then also begin the installation of a high efficiency bollard lighting along the Washington Avenue Park bike path per the City of Alpena Recreation Plan. That one's, that's been in the, in the works for quite some time, so. Bid documents were sent to eight firms and plan rooms and posted on the city's website with two bids received as follows. And I'm, I'm not going to read all the numbers, but we've got some from Thunder Bay Electric and J Rank. The, you know, just to cut off any questions, you know, maybe later, the, the Washington Park one where we see that's $127,000 from J Rank versus the 26, I think that has a lot to do with just who they're dealing with for a supplier of those lights and then the work they have to do with them. I think Thunder Bay Electric is a little more familiar with the system. They know how to make some of these things work a little better. We, we didn't, you know, looking at it, had it been reversed, maybe we would have called and asked questions, but with the way it is now and, and being that Thunder Bay Electric came in low like that, we didn't really have much question over it because, I mean, Thunder Bay is, is our current main maintenance contractor anyway and we deal with them all the time and they have a, a very good understanding of, of our system as I kind of go on to talk about. They've successfully completed, you know, many past projects and are a current maintenance contractor. The proposal for the break wall lighting was anticipated to be over the established budget of $15,000 for fiscal year 2122. So what we did is we, we planned to complete that project in the next fiscal year. So we're going to budget accordingly and the, the specs were written accordingly to, to say that it's not, you know, we won't do that project until 2223. So that's for the harbor itself and that, one of the things to, to talk about in this whole thing is that we've, where we can, we're looking at going to these bollards because obviously they're a lot less expensive and it really is all you really need on a walking path. You don't need a big tall 14-foot light that's going to cast light out, you know, hundreds of feet. It just doesn't, it's, it's not needed and it's way more expensive than it needs to be. And so that's why we're switching that out on the, on the break wall to those bollards, the same as we're doing on the Washington Avenue Park. But continuing with the replacement of the old brown poles, the pedestrian lights located in the Johnson Street Boulevard will be replaced with what we anticipate will be the new city standard. We went through several different types of lights, looked at different ones and what we want to do is we want to have our own standard, but we want to keep away from the, the older heritage look that the downtown has. So we want to have lights all over, but we can't use the brown poles anymore because we've, there's just too much been, work been done on them and they're just, they're reaching, you know, they've been reused several times and, and they're reaching the end of their useful life, so. So that's what we did is we kind of adopted a new city standard. It's a, you know, pretty, pretty efficient light, pretty, pretty low cost, we feel. It's going to take us into the future and they said it should be available for, available for quite some time. It's not a, it's not a strange type of light. It's not a new thing that's might be around, might not be. They think this is going to be for a while, so we might, we'd like to stick with it. So that'll be our first installation there and because of the types of lights they are, the LED lights, we're going to drop from the six lights that are there now down to three and, and go with that and then we're still going to buy the six and I think the other three can probably go down to the splash park because at the time we borrowed three of the downtown lights to put at the splash park. So that's kind of an odd thing to have down there, so I think we'll change those out as well. And we are, you know, the project was budgeted at $20,000 and the price received was, you know, as anticipated. So, the final one, if Charlie, if you want to pull up the map for Washington Avenue Park, that's in there, yeah, so this really worked out in our favor. You know, all along we, we had put in about $75,000 for basically the blue line to get us through Washington Avenue Park, just the main part of it from end to end. And with the way the bollards came in, we were able to look at possibly doing the red section for the $75,000 that's budgeted. And so what that does then is it lights up everything from 11th Avenue all the way around to the back of the cemetery. And I, I just, I guess one of the things I wanted to make sure is that, you know, that, some of this was never really even discussed. It was always kind of out there and we thought we were going to do it, but, you know, it just wasn't a, it hadn't come to fruition yet, but now that we're able to do it, it's like, I should remind everybody that, you know, the, the bike path that goes up and before it turns to the, the west along the back part of the cemetery there, that back part of the cemetery is basically a cemetery road that we double use as the bike path. So there will be lighting along there and I just, I, I wanted to make sure that people knew that before we, we got too much further into it that, you know, we would light up along probably the backside in between the, the north side of the cemetery road and the fence that's along there. It, I mean, it should prove for good lighting and I don't think there's anything, any issue with it, but I just thought, you know, just in case, I, I want to make sure we pointed that out and somebody knew that before we okay the whole, the whole project, so. Uh, let me see, yeah, request in the proposal documents was made to explore the installation of receptacles on the proposed lighting. We do that on a lot of our tall, taller poles. The, the, the bollards just can't handle a receptacle, so what they would do is they would just put a post and receptacle on it. And this was just if we wanted to light some trees up in that park and I think at this time we'll just, we're just not going to do that at this time because it's easy enough to do it after anyway because of what they would do. So we're just going to leave it for now and if we decide we want to do it, it's, it, it won't cost us that much more to do that project in the future if we wanted to because the power would be there and everything would, would, would be ready for it. Yeah, so after, you know, reviewing the cost methods suggested impossible usage of receptacles, we decided the expense does not, it's not warranted at present. The proposed installation method would allow for receptacles to be installed at any time in the future and if the city felt there was a need. So, all in all, all that said, it's my recommendation to city engineer that the 2022 High Efficiency Lighting Project be awarded to Thunder Bay Electric for a contracted amount of $65,017. I would also recommend executing the attached contract modification number one in the amount of $47,915 to extend the Washington Avenue Park project to maximize the existing budget.
Again, just a quick comment, it's like I appreciate all the extra work that you put in to find these ways to get these projects done and truly, you know, I've been here ever since I've been with the city, this has been going on where you see this creativeness happen in all the departments, so just wanted to say how much I appreciate it. It's nice to be, seeing that project because we've been talking about it since I've been.
It's time.
I'm on that one, so. So, thanks to you and your staff on this particular one, Steve.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I'd also like to point out, I know that you already did, those brown lights we have moved from downtown to the parks and painted and repainted, so.
Yeah, they were used in, in the, in the downtown to begin with and then we threw them, you know, in salvage and then we put them in the parks and then they went on Long Rapids Road and, you know, they're still on Long Rapids Road. Yeah, so it's, yeah, we certainly got our use out of them.
It's time.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I move we award the High Efficiency Lighting Project to Thunder Bay Electric for a contracted amount of $65,017.
Forward.
I assume you wanted two motions.
It should be two, yeah.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
I move we approve the contract modification with Thunder Bay Electric for the amount of $47,915 to extend the Washington Park project.
Second.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes. And under new business, we have countywide cleanup day and that is me. So, everyone received my letter. So a little back history on countywide cleanup day. It's an extra service that the Resource Recovery Facility offers to the citizens of Alpena. It's not a required service and this came about many years ago because in the city, but mostly the townships, people didn't know what to do with tires and furniture and old washers and dryers and they ended up in ditches and in fields. So we decided to offer one day, Countywide Cleanup Day, where people could bring those things to us and, and we would dispose of them. And we noticed after a few years, it really helped to start cleaning up the ditches and it gave people a place to bring these things. And when we started this program, the county would give us money from MOLA, Mount Moranciasco, to Alpena landfill and every township and the city got the same amount and it usually varied between $600 and $900 every year. And we all put it back into recycling to pay for this particular program and back then it would cost us about $4,000 to $5,000 a year. We haven't gotten that money in probably about four years from the county, but we continue to offer the program. But as prices go up, last year we spent almost $16,000 out of our budget on this program and this year with the cost of hauling and, and we've done some changes when it comes to hauling. We actually purchased a truck to do our own hauling because the prices of transportation just skyrocketed this year on us. So, we're expecting it to be around $25,000 this year and it's just a cost that the recycling facility can't, can't absorb any longer. So what we're asking and we know it's in between budget is that most of the materials come from the city and, and because we keep track of the cars that come through and where they're coming from, come from the city and from the township of Alpena. But things come from, we get lots of tires and, and other material from all of the townships, but the majority comes from the highly populated areas. So we're asking the city and the township will take this to their board, the Alpena Township will take this to their board as well, $2,000 from each entity to help and then we're asking $500 from the other townships to pitch in and then we're going to look for corporate sponsorships to try to fill in that gap so that we can still offer the program. So that's kind of our request of this board and I'll answer any questions you have.
I have a question about recycling. Will we still get funding from the materials that are collected?
So on cleanup day, it's kind of a different, on cleanup day we collect all of, we have a metal bin that we put, that we drop and we put the metals in the bin and we get to keep the money from that when we turn that in. But when it comes to the refrigerators, we have to hire a company to come because the freon has to be taken out and they take the refrigerators, the stoves, all of that and they make the money on that, but we, they transport it, they take it away. We, we have a company that comes and picks up all the mattresses we get. We have to pay them to do that, but the material is recycled. So it's recycled into the chips in your garden. They recycle every part of the mattress that they can, so it doesn't go into the landfill. But then we get a lot of garbage, like in my, in my memo, like last year we, we got what? 16,000, six tons of just garbage that went to the landfill and then we have to pay the tipping fees on that, so we have to haul that and then we have to pay the tipping fees. So it costs us a lot of money to run this day, but it helps to keep, to keep the county in shipshape.
No, I have, I have no questions. I'll, I'll speak in favor of it just because, you know, I think the recycling program is going to be vital for our future. You know, I think it's been very well-run and up to this point for what you have to work with. We've seen the facility and what you guys do out there is pretty amazing. And having, you know, been. And having, you know, been, you know, down to that in the past, down to that event, it's amazing to see the line of cars. And I would have to agree with Mayor Portem that, you know, the areas that you used to see junk just dumped into are now getting picked up and so on. There have also been people that have gone to homes that couldn't afford to get things moved away and put them in their pickup and showed up at the state to get rid of things too, to help our own city residents out, so. So I think it's, it's a great thing. I don't have a problem at all with the two thousand. I think, is this, is, are you proposing this be something that we do annually to help with the state?
We would like this to be budgeted and that's what we're asking too, is to include it in the budget in the next few years anyway. And, and what will happen over the, hopefully over the next year and a half, two years, is we will have a new recycling facility. So we'll be able to take in more product. And the more product we can take in and send to market, the more viable recycling becomes in the area. Right now, we're limited because we only have so much room and so much space. We can only take so much material. So right now, um, the, the price of material at the market is high, especially with the price of oil skyrocketing. People are calling us for plastic. They want plastic. We're still only able to process so much plastic, no matter how much plastic they want. But in a new facility, we'll be able to do more, bring in more money, and then hopefully sustain programs like this when, when we get to that point.
It's a wonderful program.
It is.
It really is. It just makes me proud that, kudos to you.
We work hard.
Is it going to be two thousand next year as well?
If, if we can budget, if we can put it in the budget, yes. And, and, and just so that you know, the, the discussion at, at recycling currently is if we can't get enough funds to do this program, we might not do it this year. So it's kind of vital that we get our funding in order. If something happens, it doesn't go this year, we would return the two thousand dollars that council gave for this year, but we're hoping to make it go.
Does that require two separate motions, though? One for two thousand and, and then another for it to be an ongoing two thousand dollars?
I would suggest you just do it for this year and then next year, when you're planning in the budget, you can put it in there wherever you, yeah.
Who's going to tell Hannah?
So I move that we allow the two thousand dollars.
Support.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Nothing else before the council entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Again.
I, I was afraid Mike wanted to stay here. I'm looking.